All the meeting to order. Can we please have the roll call?
Uh, Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Parlette?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Kevin, would you give him a pledge?
Sure. Please pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. Urgency items. Are there any urgency items?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to accept the agenda as posted.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. One, waive the reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting of February 5th, 2019. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. Approve application 2019-004 with staff recommendations for the Cinco de Mayo event to be held on May 5th, 2019. Approve an agreement for sales, use, and transaction tax audit and reporting services with Avenue Insights and Analytics. Approve and authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Paul Curran, DBA Curran Consulting for City Engineer Services.
Would any one like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Can I just ask a question about an item? For the last five or six meetings, we've been having this continuing existence of a emergency. Could somebody kind of like elucidate the whole deal and that why we're doing that? I mean, now it looks like we're going into another emergency. If we get another two and a half feet of water, we may have another emergency. But I'm just kind of curious about what that's all about.
Well, to give you an idea, the county, I think, is still doing an emergency on Rock. They might have just got done with the Rocky fire, but they're still on the Valley fire to continue the... In case something comes up, we, once we were non-declared, then...
We don't have options.
We don't have any options of anything that comes up from that emergency as we're still working through it. We haven't even done our projects yet. So, some of them we've done.
So, which emergency are we talking about right now?
This one is the, uh, shoot.
Do you want to pull it so we can...
No, I just, I just wanted to, because it was on the agenda every, every two weeks.
2017, the flood, because we didn't have any property damage.
So, we want to keep this up until the next flood.
It's a fire. Excuse me. The flood is, we already have everything.
That's been...
Excuse me, thank you. Too many emergencies going out there, confused on emergencies.
All right, cool. Let me just close.
All right. Would any member of the public like to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, bring you back to council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the public presentation, uh, public input section of our meeting. Do we have any of the forms for that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there any public input? Very well. Public hearings. Parklands ordinance. Hold a public hearing and adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lakeport amending chapter 9.80 of Title IX of the Lakeport Municipal Code regarding hours of use of city parklands. Could you report on that one?
Your staff.
Obey Doug.
On the parks, you reporting on that? Your staff reporting?
I didn't know I had to do that.
Welcome to the meeting.
I'm sorry. I thought we covered that last meeting. What this ordinance is, is that we're, uh, right now, Library Park is the only park facility we have that has posted hours, um, of use. And basically is closed from midnight to 6:00 a.m., uh, to the public. And so, uh, there has been some issues. West Side Park has been brought to our attention. And as a matter of fact, by the Park and Rec Commission, one of the commissioners brought that up, that, um, there are no hours posted out there. So, when we got looking at it, it was, it came to our attention that West Side Park was not included in the hours of use that Library Park is. So, what we're doing with this ordinance is we're making it homogenous so that all park facilities come under all the same rules of hours of operation. And so, there's really no need for anybody to be out on the baseball fields at West Side Park at midnight or 2:00 in the morning. And so, this will help law enforcement also be able to, you know, ask people to leave. You know, if they're out partying or doing whatever they're doing at 2:00 in the morning, they'll actually have an ordinance that says, "No, you can't be here. Well, I'd ask you to leave."
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Is there any questions from council?
See fair.
Now, we will open the public hearing. If there's any comment from the public.
Good afternoon, sir. Good evening, city council members. My name is Chris Masigo, and I'm a resident of West Side Park. Uh, this is the first I've heard of the hours actually being midnight till, I'm not sure what time of the morning. I would ask you to reconsider and move the hours up to either sunset to sunrise. Uh, there's an awful lot of issues and problems that go on at the park between the hours of sunset to midnight. Midnight, my opinion, and I talked to other residents that live out there at West Side Park, is too late. We lose sleep. There's, uh, speed contests that take place out there. There's drinking. There's, uh, some unlawful sexual activity that's going on out there at the park. I've gone out there, cleaned up trash, and find, uh, used condoms. I found some illegal drug activity out there, paraphernalia from that stuff out there as well. Uh, so, and I've said this before at another hearing that I was at. Nothing goes on at a park after dark. There's no reason for anybody to be in a park after dark. So, if it's possible, I'd like to see you folks amend that ordinance to make it a sunset to sunrise ordinance. There's no reason for anybody to be in a park, especially one that runs to a residential zone, not in a commercial district, down in like most parks are. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? All right, we'll bring it back to council.
Uh, David?
Yeah?
If we were to change the hours, would it not be under this ordinance? We would have to have a different ordinance because the ordinance is the same as the one that we have for Library Park. I mean, would it have to be something different than this ordinance?
If you wanted to change it, then we would have to bring it back for another reading after this. Um, and we would have to, yes, amend it because right now, we're just making the hours that apply to Library Park apply to all parks in the city. And so, if you wanted to maintain, diminish that to 5:00 a.m. for Library Park, but have different hours for West Side, then we'd have to add a separate, separate section to the municipal code.
Okay.
I was wondering if chief can speak to any sort of issues that we have in parks between the hours of sunset and midnight?
We do, we do get calls, um, to West Side Park during hours of darkness as well as Library Park. Both of those parks, various different calls. Unfortunately, I don't have any kind of stats in front of me where I could give you an idea of how many calls we get at the different parks between hours of dark and midnight. I'd have to do some more research on that. I don't have that information right now. But we do, we do get part calls out there at, at all kinds of different hours. And even on the weekends, sometimes in the daytime. So, um, that's something we could research and look into if the council wanted to have more information in front of them.
Mr. Mayor? Kevin, I was wondering what, um, why, you know, if you know some background of why the hours are the way they are now. I mean, I know I walk through Library Park all the time after dark, walking the dog. So, I wouldn't necessarily want to see it too early, but, um, what are the reasons behind the times?
I, I don't know specifically in regards to Library Park, but I think what, what the, and Doug can correct if I'm wrong, what Parks and Recreation was trying to do is because there are no hours right now for West Side, it seemed like the easiest way was to link it with the rest of our parklands.
Yeah, I understand that.
But I, I don't know a specific reason as to why the midnight to 6:00 a.m. I think it is.
I could offer some information on that. I, I was working for the city when that happened, and, uh, there was a time when we were having, um, a lot of issues with crime at the park, and we wanted to, um, have a good set of codified rules that were posted down there. And the discussion was at the time, due to various, Library Park has a high concentration of, of community activities as well. And so, I think with that in mind, the decision at the time was that, that midnight would be a good hour for that park between midnight and 5:00 a.m. so that, um, particularly in the evening time, especially in the summer, people be able to still use the park after dark.
Yeah.
Because there was legitimate uses going on in the park at nighttime in the dark down at Library Park. But, um, all the research at the time, we felt, it was my understanding that the city felt that, um, midnight was late enough to do all the legitimate things that could happen down there. That's why Library Park ended up with those hours. And then, as you know, you know, West Side is the newer park that's only, I don't know what year it, it, um, actually got officially dedicated. But, but those, there was no hour rules codified for it at that time.
There's no lights out there right now.
What was that?
There's no lights out there.
There's also no lights.
Can I expand a little bit? West Side Park has no lights, so there, there is nothing for people really to do out there with lights after hours. Library Park has lights. A lot of people like to fish along the shoreline in Lakeport. I think there probably is legitimate reason, as long as you can prove that someone's up to, uh, a lawful activity in Library Park up till midnight. It's somewhat acceptable in a commercial area, as long as they're not causing a problem. But West Side Park is in a residential area, and there is no lights. And where there's no lights, people tend to, you know, good. And when people are in their cars or out there in the cars in a dark area, they tend to, uh, be a little more mischievous. And especially during the summertime hours when we have our windows open, we can hear that mischievous activity very well. And I'm not, I'm not asking for the, uh, the city to change the hours on the other parks, only the park, West Side Park, because it is in a residential area and it's quieter out there. I'd like to see that park, particular park, even if, you know, you have to make a new reading or new ordinance to change the hours over there for that particular park because it is different than the other parks with a lack of lighting and it's in a residential area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, according to Chris, the, um, activities that go on out there are drinking and racing and littering and sexual misconduct. At least three out of the four, and I'll let you figure out which ones they are, are all reportable. And according to the latest report from the chief, our response time is anywhere from three minutes to six minutes. Those of us that have been outside at all in the last couple of days with the full moon, it's beautiful out there. And sunset in the wintertime is 5:00 o'clock sometimes. I don't agree with that. And certainly people that, there's a dog park out there, and under the light of the moon, they could be out there at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 in the wintertime, walking their dogs, doing everything. And I think it's unfortunate that people are out there being a bunch of yahoos and so forth. And I'm sure that the West Side Community Park eventually plans to do some improvements, but I don't see any reason why we can't go forward this. And if there's some problems and the chief can't keep up with the incidents and there's a whole bunch of calls out there, I think mainly what chief is looking for is an opportunity to go out there. If anybody's out there at midnight, they're, they need to be gone. And I think when we start, you know, trying to dial in different parts of the city with different rules and regulations, all of these things, drinking, racing, and so forth, they're all already illegal. I think a call there and a six-minute response time is the worst they have. They could take care of that. I don't see any reason to change this at this time. I'm not adverse to changing it later on. I mean, maybe midnight is a little bit late, but I think that sunset is way too early. I mean, you can see kids out there doing soccer or whatever, and all of a sudden, the sun's going down, and now it's half an hour into dark, and I, I think that's just a little ridiculous. But, um, I think going this way is the way to go. But if there's a problem in the future, I'm more than happy to take another look at it.
I'm sort of on the same page as that. My, my situation is, I think what we should do is at least get this in on the books and then have the chief monitor the park and calls and stuff like that and see what he comes up with as information. And once we have more information, we can dial that, that park to maybe, you know, 9:00 o'clock at night or something like that because, uh, in the summertime, it doesn't get dark till 9:00, 10:00 o'clock. In the wintertime, it gets dark at 5:00. So, you know, I think, once we've got at least hours on the park, then we can dial it in a little bit better down the road with more information as far as activities that are going on out there after the dark. That's my thoughts.
I'm open to the idea of changing the hours from midnight to maybe 10:00 p.m. Because I agree, dark is, it changes during the year, and during the wintertime, it goes really early. But, um, I think that midnight is, is late enough that there could be problems with allowing it to stay at midnight. I'm also okay with keeping parklands versus now breaking out hours for specific parks. If we moved it to 10, we could keep it the same as parklands. And then, between those hours, which is either a five-hour period or maybe a one-hour period, depending on, uh, winter or summer, that's when the calls should come in. After that, uh, they should definitely still come in if there's a problem or a nuisance. But then we're giving law enforcement extra tools that they may not need for earlier hours. So, if it's, I would, I would like to see us change this to 10 to 5 with the option of in the future altering it as needed. But right now, it's our first read. We just advanced it to the next meeting for our next first read. It's really not that big a deal to change it.
Is that your second reading? It was on consent last time?
Yeah. Oh, I thought the public, oh, okay. The public hearing is the second reading. I'm still okay changing it to 10 to 5.
The, I'd be good with 10 too, except for the one here at Library Park. Let's say you're over there eating dinner. You get out of dinner at 10:00 o'clock, and you just want to take a stroll through the park. You can't because it's 10:00 o'clock. You know, I mean, that one to midnight would be all right. I mean, if we get our cameras and stuff, we gotta, you know, to look at the stars or whatever. And for all of the parklands to go in one thing, a little bit of...
Again, taking a stroll through the park or walking your dog is not necessarily going to be a sizable offense. It's, it's to give our law enforcement an additional tool in the toolbox to move people along.
Oh, that's what you're saying. So, change it to 10, but if you're just walking through, you're okay?
Well, I'm saying change it to 10. Yeah, I, I don't see that people would stop just wandering through. It's the people who are staying because it's remote, because it's dark. The people who are taking advantage of those, the people who are going to be pretty easily identified by law enforcement is problematic and need to approach. This gives them an additional toolbox.
Yeah. I think there's an issue there.
I've got a question. How, we're, we're talking about wanting to lump all the parks together out of ease of making a, a uniform set of hours that you can be in the park.
Well, that's what's on the agenda, right?
Right. How difficult really is it to go, "Okay, um, all park times are closed from midnight to 5 except for West Side Park, which closes 9:00 to 5:00 a.m.?" I mean, it, does it entail that much more work to be able to do that?
No. The only thing I would ask is if we have the theater out there, the hours could be after 10.
Could be.
People would, and you, the park is actually closed. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, if there, there's nobody supposed to be in the park, even if you're strolling, if the park hours are closed, correct?
If the park is closed, the law is such that you cannot be there for any reason. And because we have to enforce the law fairly and evenly, it's, it's very difficult to have a, it's, it's closed for this, but if you're just doing this, it's okay. It would be difficult to have that kind of a codification on a, on a law. So, it's, it's a lot cleaner to enforce it across the board. It's, it's, here's the hours you can use it, here's the hours you can't. The council could certainly also, as the city manager mentioned, if a, if a nighttime theater ever comes to fruition at that location, the council could always have in the law an exception for approved events. Whether it's at Library Park, West Side Park, if, if you want to authorize an event like where the Fourth of July goes on, it, it generally goes after 10:00 p.m., so an exception for an approved event. That could certainly be, yeah. It may already be in the ordinance.
That's what I was going to get to.
Yeah, the key word is "to," you know, that, that theater years down the road would be in building.
It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, I could say that it wouldn't create issues for my agency if, as the mayor said, the park hours are this except for this, then we just educate the officers on, at this location, these are the rules.
Okay.
And, and these are the hours at this park. That's not a problem at all for, for us. It's just kind of what the council, what your discretion is as far as how you want to do that. We will enforce it as it's laid out in the ordinance.
Thank you.
So, we could move forward with what we have in front of us today and then look to staff to bring us something specific to West Side Park.
That's what I was going to say, is that we have very little information right now to really change timing. I tend to agree with Councilmember Parlette in that, you know, we should add this park on. It should definitely have hours, but then we should maybe take a closer look of, are there problems? And, um, do we need to make any changes to the time in the future?
I think that one of the things that hits me right away is when you say 10:00 o'clock. You know, a lot of us are larks. We get up early in the morning, we do our thing, and, you know, 9:30, 10:00 o'clock, we're ready to hit the hay. There's a lot of people out there, and they're completely on the other side of the spectrum, and they're night owls. And 9:30, the sun goes down, they want to go for a walk, blah, 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 10:00, 10:30, and then you're trying to decipher if they're criminals or they're walking. 10:00 to me is like just way too early. I think if we were going to do anything at all, I think we need to look more like at 11:00. Midnight's maybe a little late, but, yeah, I think that move forward the way we are and we'll look at the problems. And if we do make a change, you know, we could look at something a little more realistic like 11:00. I know you'll probably get up at 4:00, so 11:00 from 10:00 seems really late to you.
We had a reason for choosing 10. It wasn't really, you know, correspondence in my personal schedule, but...
Because in the summertime, I'm not sure, but I'm sure that it's like really like after 9:00, pretty late, that the sun goes down and it's still a little bit light. And this is, you know, our parklands are to be used by the local citizens as much as possible. We don't want any riffraff in there, and if we don't have any problems. The last thing that I think we need to do is have more laws and rules when they already previously exist for drinking and racing and littering and, you know, being, you know, mischievous mischief. So, you know, doing this, I think, is a good starting point. And if there's any issues, we're more than happy to hear again.
One of the reasons why I mentioned 10:00 o'clock is that typically noise ordinances will shift their decibel levels as acceptable at the 10:00 hour. That way, since, since what Chris cited were a number of noise-related issues, switching it over at 10:00 is standard. So, that's why I chose 10:00.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Most resorts are that, you know, quiet time.
Uh-huh. Well, because, it's just because uses that are outdoors impact residents who are trying to get to sleep. So, and that's fair. Just being cognizant and, you know, modifying your activity level so you're not impacting negatively the residents that are sleeping around 10:00. It's just that it's pretty standard quiet hour time.
Well, maybe in the meantime, while we figure it out, we could have some more, uh, so more enforcement out there.
Yes, um, we can, we can put out a briefing and ask for the officers to be out there more than they have can to do some patrols. And I would also encourage the, all of the residents there to call us with any, any concern they see. And, um, at least that way, we, we have a record of it, and we can respond and, and make a contact out there. We can, we can, I can do that right now. I mean, that's, that's not a problem, and I think that's appropriate. And then, you know, if council wishes further research, then I would need to know that.
I think this is very similar to, um, the speed zone. You know, if you have a number of incidents, and the incidents are in a high level, higher than the average, then you need to look at the problem. You need to make the speed limit, you need to look at that. If we have a number of incidents, which we will start quantifying and recording, then we will take appropriate action, and we'll make sure that the people out there aren't harmed in any way. They're entitled to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness and quiet, and I totally respect that. So, um, I think moving forward with this ordinance and then the next step if there's any issues. And I think that Chris and the neighbors out there need to make those calls so that they are part of the incident reports so we know, and then we'll just take appropriate action.
So, are we saying to, we're going to accept it as written and then get more information to see if we need to dial back that park?
Yeah, we can do that by consensus, right? Is to direct staff to bring us a presentation in the future specific to West Side Park.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, if there's no further discussion? Oh, but close the public hearing.
Again, there's just this to take this back to Parks and Recs. This is where this came from. And have them first look at the analysis and then bring it forward to the city council.
Good.
We will do that, David.
So, we're not going to?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, we're going.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt the ordinance of the city council, the city of Lakeport, amending chapter 9.80 of Title IX of the Lakeport Municipal Code regarding the hours of use of city parklands.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police chief. Make a determination that public convenience or necessity...
I think we're missing the... No, you missed, Mayor. Back up line.
Thank you. Consider motion to support the continued implementation of the Lake EDC Path to Prosperity Economic Strategy and the rest staff to consider the allocation of funding consistent with said plan as part of the development of the city of Lakeport fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick little overview real quick while Andy's getting set up here. Andy's going to give us the presentation on some of the EDC actions and kind of little overview of the plan. But as you, as your body, I'm sure, does recall, in December of last year, we had a joint meeting with both the border superpowers and the city council of Clear Lake in Kelseyville, with the Kelseyville Presbyterian Church, where we received a report from Dr. Ilo Wisono State, who was instrumental in helping, assisting our team put this together. It was a joint effort by, um, by the EDC and both the cities and the county, as well as the workforce alliance of the North Bay. I think, you know, one of, what I'm, hopefully you'll take away from this plan is, you know, some of the biggest concerns that we heard at that joint meeting was, "Oh, great, another plan. You know, how is this different? How do we ensure that this just doesn't end up on the shelf and, and just became, you know, another plan?" And I think what Andy's going to show you is that, um, basically with the resurgent efforts of the EDC over the past couple of years jointly, uh, some of the larger private groups, real estate agents, banking and stuff, and then also the three jurisdictions have really come together, and we've got a really nice working situation going on there. And I think what you're going to see is a lot of these plan elements are already underway. There are some implementation efforts going forward. So, I'm hopeful that that's what you'll take away from this presentation is that we're already implementing so many of these elements of the plan. I think the other big piece to kind of take away from it too is, is the tenants that are in the main, the main pieces of this plan dovetail very nicely with what LEED Act's doing and fits very well with our economic strategic plan for the city of Lakeport as well. So, lastly, after the presentation, um, we're looking to see if the city council supports the plan and then to consider the, funding it in our next budget cycle per the outline of what's recommended in the plan. So, did I do enough time stalling there, Andy?
Yes.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. So as Kevin said, my name is Andy Lucas, I'm here representing the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. Oh, thanks. So this is an updated version of our presentation. Thank you, Kevin, I appreciate the introduction and thank the council for allowing us to present tonight. Again, my name is Andy Lucas, I work as staff for the Lake County Economic Development Corporation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit established in 1983. Let's see, Jeff Lucas just came in, he's going to be doing the presentation with me as well. The Economic Development Corporation was founded again in 1983. Let's see if this is the right slide here. Yeah. I'll wait for the screen to go up here. The corporation is made up of folks, again as Kevin said, from all three jurisdictions, the City of Lakeport, the City of Clear Lake, and the County of Lake, as well as private sector interests representing finance, travel, health, workforce alliance, agriculture, and real estate. And the corporation is funded through grants by the USDA. These grants include a rural business development grant, which essentially allows for the work that the Economic Development Corporation staff does, which is direct technical assistance for businesses. So that's things like helping with your cash flow analysis and even putting together a Facebook page to help sort of get the business marketed. And then the purpose of the corporation is to facilitate the creation, retention, and expansion and attraction of businesses here in Lake County. So again, some of the services like that direct technical assistance includes the services that I mentioned there, as well as website development. We can help with QuickBooks. We really like to be sort of mechanics for businesses, get in, identify the need of the business, and then identify a way to alleviate that need. So for instance, we are working right now with a business that needs help with their cash flow analysis. So we sign them up with a service provider like a CPA that can go through, look at their books, and then the Economic Development Corporation helps with compensating that service provider for their time. So the services are at no cost to the businesses, which is really beneficial for our rural economy here. We also have recently become more involved in housing. Obviously, we all know there's a great need following the several wildfires and loss of so many houses. So through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the EDC has been able to access resources in their rural development department, which means that their housing director comes here about two times a month, works out of the EDC offices in Kelseyville and meets with developers, folks that are interested in buying houses using these USDA programs. And these programs are meant for working-class families. So a lot of our families here, you know, qualify for those programs that the USDA offers. Some of the collaborations that the Lake County Economic Development Corporation has done over the years include both the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, as well as the County of Lake and several private businesses, as well as several community organizations such as the Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association, West Side Community Park as well, we're working with them currently. And then, of course, direct assistance to businesses. We worked with O'Meara Brothers, for instance, helping them to kind of get started and get going. So we have our operating budget here. The number on the bottom, you can't see the chair, is 141,300. And this was the total operating budget for the EDC for the fiscal year of 2018. We operate generally from July due to the grant cycle that the USDA operates, usually from July 1 to June 30. And so with this, with this budget here that's in front of you, the EDC has been able to do several things over the past year, including putting several housing fairs on and again helping several businesses. We're able to pull funding sources from several, or excuse me, pull funding from several different sources. You'll note their COW Recycle, which is a state program. The City of Lakeport has also contributed to matching the grant requirement. So for instance, that 92,000, the City of Lakeport contributed, excuse me, contributed 5,000, 2,500, excuse me, 2,500, the City of Clear Lake and the City of Lakeport contributed to that rural business development grant of $92,000, which allows us to again help businesses directly. And then we also operate, the EDC also operates an intermediary relending program, which essentially the nonprofit borrows money from the USDA and relends it out to businesses in the community, again for job creation, retention. And so through that budget that was posted there, that 141,000 and change, the EDC was able to accomplish several things last year, including establishing this great website with a data capture tool. It can be used for business expansion here. So for instance, if we're working with a business that wants to know how many businesses are in the City of Lakeport that employ one to five people because they want to provide a service to those businesses, we can look that information up and then they have a target that they can, that they can go out and talk to businesses. So it's a, it's a great tool for existing businesses here, as well as investment and business attraction. Site selectors overseas can log onto the website, take a look at this site selector tool, and get a huge amount of information on Lake County and projected growth of Lake County. And that's again meant for investment and business attraction here. Again, the business loan program, we approved one loan to a business here last year. And then, again, on the USDA, the 502 direct home loan programs, where we have completed five workshops around the county, we have another one coming up March 16th, and that will be for Spanish and English language households, and that will be in Kelseyville. We have about nine loan packages with folks in the pipeline that will get ready to close, and those folks can use these programs to purchase homes or build new homes. And then the EDC was also involved in the Lake County Path to Prosperity Economic Development Strategy that Dr. Eiler packaged, and here are the contributions the City of Lakeport also contributed to that strategy coming to fruition. And we have here a proposed, excuse me, budget forecast for the next fiscal cycle of the Economic Development Corporation that includes an application to USDA again for 80,000. That's not guaranteed, but we do have a good relationship with them, so we have our fingers crossed there. But we also have, just recently, we're received approval from the U.S. Department of Commerce with regard to establishing an economic development disaster recovery coordinator position for the EDC. So the EDC has been, thanks, so the EDC has been expanding over the past few years, although it has been around since 1985, it's gone through several different iterations, and the City of Lakeport is to thank for that as well for their contributions. So we have a, an operating budget forecast here of 252,500 for the fiscal year, and that includes the several federal and local contributions that we'll be requesting. So with regard to the 2018 Path to Prosperity and Economic Strategy, the Lake County Economic Development Corporation Board on December 7th had a board retreat, and EDC staff was assigned sort of the three priority tasks for the year upcoming, and those three are listed there. We'd like to identify the 25 commercial sites available for investment that obviously includes sites within the city and get those posted into that site selectors website again for investment, business attraction. And then broadband services, we are working with Lake County Broadband Solutions, we have for, gosh, going on probably two years now. So we continue to work with them, and not just them, but the goal is to expand broadband coverage for everybody in sort of any which, any means necessarily, I suppose, if you will. And then we have our, the infrastructure improvements which support business development, investor development in Lake County. In particular, an example was a specific project, the Lampton care field and the potential to put in public restrooms there. So those are the three sort of items that the EDC staff has been tasked with this year. We plan to do this work and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to present to the council today. Jeff, do you want to add any?
No, you didn't.
Okay. I think that, why don't we conclude, I'll conclude our presentation, we'll open it up to questions or comments.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any questions for council? On council?
So if I'm reading this correctly, we're going to be adding $10,000 to budget for this. Am I reading that correctly?
We'll be bringing that to council during budgeting time, to bring that to the funding for that.
So what's interesting to me is that City of Lakeport's like under 5,000, City of Clear Lake, what is it, three times our size, County's 13 times our size, and we're putting in 10,000, Clear Lake putting in 10,000, County's putting in 20,000, and then we're supposed to get 60,000, 20% from funding in brands, corporish in kind donations to USDA, and that looks like a lot of that stuff's possible. And that's all well and good, if that's in place. And we did 141,000 last year, and now we're going to up that by a huge amount, like 70% up to 250,000. The thing that bothers me the most is when I look at the task force of 23 people, and they're from every great organization in Lake County except for retail. There's two people that actually have a business, there's a banker and there's a winery, and everybody else works for the school, works for the hospital, works for workforce development, works for the county, works for the city. It always seems to me that there seems to be, the people that are the stakeholders are conspicuously absent. I mean, even the presentation by Robert Eiler, there's 120 people there, I was the only person there that was in retail. Everybody was from some silo in some, you know, ivory tower somewhere talking about this great plan when they have no clue, many of them, what's going on at the grassroots level with businesses that I get with every day and I hear the same thing all the time, you know, with problems with health, I'm not healthy with health, and the quality of health. And that was on all the different cities, whether it was Clear Lake or Upper Lake or it was Middletown, and they all said the same thing. And what bothers me is these pie in the sky ideas about putting all this money into it, but yet some of the most fundamental, most important, you know, pawns in the game that actually make the game go forward is the workforce. And putting $250,000 into all these exotic plans to produce, to the airport, to do all this stuff, that's great. And then we have companies that you can hire to go train people, like that would work, you know, like you can take people and change them the way they are because they're intrinsically not interested in really working for a living necessarily if they can get on the system or if they can pick a better job or they can get a job out of the county. My problem is, you know, is this just another canned program that's got all these great bells and whistles, but the implementation, and don't get me wrong, I think the broadband thing sounds great, but it just seems like it's a lot of money about stuff that we've talked about over the years, going back 20 years. But where is the rubber meet the road? And I know that we've had the cafes, but bear in mind, when you have a cafe, you have business owners out there that, they're busy, they're running their business. A lot of people work six and seven days a week. They have a meeting to come down and talk about the cafe, we're going to talk about it. So we have retirees coming down that used to work, people that are so tired, they say, you know, I can't make it down there. I made it down here because I was a council member and I thought it would be interesting. But a lot of times, there's not really the people that are down in the trenches doing all the dirty work, dealing with all the, you know, the different types of socio-economically challenged people and all that stuff. And those are a lot of the issues we have. Those aren't up here because we're dealing with them, but they're, you know, the superintendent of school's not dealing with it, the hospital administrator's not dealing with it, the people that work for us, you know, they're not dealing with it. We're dealing with it in the trenches. And so, you know, I'm not sure that all this effort to bring this big economic development strategy is something that's been completely vetted by all the working people that are going to be affected by the, I mean, not that we're going to be out a lot of money, 10,000 is not a lot of money. But I'm just questioning whether this is just another iteration of another plan that's a little bit more upgraded, because now we got to go broadband, because back then we didn't even have cell phones when we first started these economic development plans. So that's just some of the issues that I wanted to bring up. But I'm all about economic development, but I don't think it's as simple as bringing in a, you know, a scholastic expert who has all these bars and charts and graphs with all this, you know, minced up data telling you how it's going to get better by doing these things in a specific order and then spending $250,000 to do it. So that's my two cents. Or actually, it's more like a diet.
All right, Andy. Yeah, absolutely. Come on up.
So I answered that question.
I don't know if it was a selected question, Kenny.
No, I don't.
But I know what you're talking about, I do. We've seen lots of strategies kind of go through. One thing I did want to say is that we are mostly about working with the local folks day in and day out. I mean, we see them, we go out to their businesses and we talk to people in detail, we talk to them in the light manufacturing, we talk to everybody that's already here, and we try to help them with whatever their needs are. And we've been doing it a long time, and what we're wanting to do is more of it. And I understand owning a business, pros and cons of that, and it's difficult. If you find a motivated young person who will work and focus and do the job, it's a wonderful thing and you can kind of bring them up. But there is a difference in, I don't know, I think we're about the same age, but when we started out and the work ethic was, I think, different. And we see it every day, the businesses that are lucky enough to find the right people that will stick with them have much better chance of success. I don't know what the answer is. I used to do the job training stuff for 10 years here, and it was difficult then, and I think it's more difficult now. I don't have the answer for you on that. I don't know whether it's a culture of Northern California or the whole nation or what the deal is, I really don't. But I can tell you that what we've tried to do is take that strategy that Dr. Eiler prepared, narrow it down to some practical stuff, and apply ourselves to it. And it was the board, the EDC board, which Margaret serves on, that helped us determine where we should focus our efforts. And we're here today looking for some funding to do that. The city's been really good and helped us with funding in the past, but I don't know if we can answer your very formal question, especially on the workforce.
It's like, there's just, there's so much to address, and like Jeff said, we're trying to get the first loving for things that we think are, be most helpful the quickest. But we do have the schools and all those people at the table also, workforce, because the employers complain that they can't get employable people or the people need assistance. So that group helps us with what kind of classes, what can we do? So that group helps us with what kind of classes, what can we do to help train that. We need, there's businesses that need funding to get off the ground, or to help them with their cash flow. So we try to address that. And so it's a multiple of different venues, and, you know, and you're right, we don't have anybody in the retail sector, I think, on our board, do we?
No, and I'd love to have more private sector folks.
Yeah, so that was a very good point you brought out.
Let me say one thing that's really interesting. We get calls all the time. You're approved for 25,000, 50,000, 150,000 dollars. And I always tell them the same thing. I said, "We're having a hard enough time." And I want to make this absolutely clear to everybody. We have been subjected to minimum wage increases of 37.5% on payroll. And I asked Dr. Iler when I was there, he said, "We have to increase service at the retail outlets and the hospitalities." And I asked him, point blank, I said, "We've had a 37.5% increase in payroll in the last three years for minimum wage." Now, people that are working in hotels and motels and a lot of retail outlets are making on or about retail, you know, they're thinking about minimum wage. And if that goes up, let's say, 40%, and you have 10 people working at, let's just say, the Skylark, they have 10 people working there, and they all got a 40% raise, and you're gonna increase the service there, when you're gonna have to cut payroll 40% to stay where you were, so you're gonna go from 10 people to 6 people, and you're gonna increase service? I said, "How is that gonna happen?" And anybody that has any employees, let's say grocery outlet, and they got 25 employees, and every year, because we are in a rural area, we're subjected to this price increase because of minimum wage, because they want to get San Francisco people up to 15 bucks an hour. And I'm here to tell you that I had people making 8 bucks an hour, they got 10 bucks an hour, got 11 bucks an hour, and they weren't worth 8 dollars. And I'm sorry to say, but it's true. I mean, I deal with them, and they weren't worth 8 bucks. And most of them are gone now, and we keep going through them. We've done like 20 interviews. We have one person coming on today, got her car impounded, she's not at work. You know, it just goes on and on and on. I can tell you horror stories about it, because I'm in the trenches with it. But the point is, when we're talking about these grandiose plans, when the most, you know, most important part of it is the workforce, and people are gonna listen to the training, I mean, these people don't want to go to training, or they're too busy working to go to training. It's a really difficult thing to kind of crack, but I don't know that, I mean, I know you said you've gone to different businesses. I haven't talked to anybody about it, but when someone says, "We'll give you a loan," the last thing in the world I need right now, after my payroll's gone up 40%, is doing loan service. And if you gave somebody a loan, I would question it. Do you think they can pay it back right now? Because this is a tough time for small business, very tough, because the government doesn't get it. 40% increase in payroll over four years, that's crazy. I mean, imagine if anybody had a 40% increase in any expense. How do you stay in business? Retail grocery, 1% business, you got a 40% increase in payroll? We're already 10,000 underwater, trying to do other things to stay alive, and I know other businesses are too. You loan them money, you're gonna lose it. That's what scares me about some of these programs, because they're not in position to pay it, and if they don't really do their cost analysis and the benefits and what they're gonna get out of it, paying for the buck, it's a scary thing. And I wouldn't want to be sitting on a board loaning money to small business right now with the new payroll requirements, and it keeps getting worse. So that's what bothers me about the whole program, is they're not in the trenches feeling the hurt and the pain from the workforce that we have. So that's why I'm so late.
Absolutely, I understand what you're saying, Kenny. I mean, I ran a couple of small businesses here on downtown.
Before the price increases.
So right at the start of the price increases, that was one of the reasons I decided to sell. But that's neither here nor there. I think what these guys are offering are a valuable service, because there are a lot of problems facing small business owners in our community. What you're describing is a giant problem. But that doesn't mean that the problems that they're addressing aren't also valid and need to be addressed, and the work that they're going to do has that value.
I just wanted to kind of throw it out there, so they can.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we don't have any control over the minimum wage, so.
Minimum wage, George, and the workforce is just a giant issue that they probably are not going to be able to solve by tomorrow to get you some workers that are worth 15 dollars an hour that work for 12. But that's neither here nor there. Yeah, we really don't have any control over that. And I know it's an issue. I don't know, like I'm saying, I don't know what to do about that.
Well, one thing that did come up after the Iler presentation, a guy came to me in Oregon, very innovative, I think her name is Governor Bates, I think might be. They have a metropolitan wage, they have a standard county wage, and they have a rural wage. We need to look seriously at that. And also for Doug and Kevin, the idea prevailing wage when we're, you know, three hours or five hours, depending on the traffic from the Bay Area, we have prevailing wage, stopping projects, doubling the cost of projects. We need to get people, our leaders, to represent us in a way that we are getting properly represented in the rural areas, and not getting killed by policies that should only be given to San Francisco, Sacramento, and like Los Angeles, when we're living up here in the sticks. So that's kind of why I was on the subject.
That's a really good point. The League has just started a rural communities division, just to bring out rural problems. And that'd be a great.
Servo.
Yeah, really.
I need one more.
Because you do bring a lot of really important issues that is top on rural communities.
So just a couple of responses, if I may. Because I know Kenny a long time, and I like him and I respect you, I do. So on the structure of the EDC board, I've been hesitant to grow the board very fast. I like to slow grow. It's like a business. When we restarted this thing, I didn't want it to grow real fast and get us out beyond what our capacity was, and raise expectations beyond what I thought we could do. Margaret knows that. She wanted to go faster than I did. She wants to build incrementally, just like a business. You can't go from here to here. You've got to grow slowly. But now we're at a point where I think our board, we've got good people on the board, but I would like to see more private sector involved in it. And we have started talking, and we have folks on the private sector who are meeting informally, and we're just talking and getting ideas from them. Like, what else should we be doing? So I just want you to know, we're not, as staff and sort of the operators who do the day-to-day work, we're not isolated. We're dealing with the companies and the other businesses every day. That's kind of our bread and butter. The board provides us with direction, and we try to implement. But I just want you to know, we're not, we're kind of part of the business community, I think. And on the employee thing, I don't, I think you have a good idea, but I don't know how we do that. I think that's a political, oh, shit, deal.
And they do provide technical assistance too. Just people, you know, not necessarily they don't want to loan money to them, but they just want, you know, technical assistance on their businesses, that they provide that service to. Andy and Jeff have done a great job in the short time that we've been together. They've got a lot of things accomplished and assisted a lot of businesses. I want to thank them for all that they've done.
Any more comment from council?
I am encouraged and excited at the list of projects that Andy was talking about. Infrastructure for, like wastewater treatment for the airport is something that'll benefit the whole county. Broadband rolled out as broadly as possible. Another thing that's gonna benefit the whole county in ways that are even more important than, you know, you can stream Netflix from any place in the county. But you can also work from home. And so, you know, we talked about it during Dr. Iler's presentation, is that's what government does, is it creates the infrastructure that allows the businesses to thrive and grow. And so this seems very consistent with those priorities of creating the environment so that businesses can thrive and grow. Thank you.
The best thing about this to me is the collaborative effort, that the two cities and the county are finally all coming together, and you have so much interest and so many people that are willing to participate and want to see it move forward.
And our investment is relatively minor. It was just an opportunity to bring out some of the things that, I just think that there's a wall between the administrative part of Lake County and the people that are in the trenches, that they don't deal with the socio-economically challenged people, and the grifters, and the panhandlers, and the shoplifters. I mean, we had one this morning, and it just goes on and on and on. So I think it's important that we get those involved, stakeholders, and go out and find them if they won't come to the meetings, because they need to get their input in there. But I know the whole program looks good in a lot of different ways, but I think some of the fundamental parts need to really seriously be considered about how we're going to make that work to move it forward. Because I believe sincerely, when I ran for office way back when, seven years ago, I said, "The reason that most businesses go out of business, because they deserve to, because they don't have good customer service, they don't know about sales and marketing, they don't know how to benchmark pricing, and they don't know what they're doing, and they still don't in most cases." And we do need to increase customer service, you know, especially in the hospitality. Put our best foot forward, enforce the sign orders, get all the junk out of there, and clean up the place. Yeah, all that stuff, a lot of that stuff is low impact. But yeah, the whole plan, and talking about making it a place to come, and all the reason to come, and Dr. Iler talked, but there's lots of other places that are nice to come to. "Well, we need to sell ours there." I'm all for all that, but I just think that we need to also realize, well, when they come, you realize they're gonna have to deal with the homeless down on the corner, or whatever, if you're talking to Jeff and Jackie, or, you know, they're taking a shoplifter out by the collar, dragging them out to Chief over there. Those are the kind of things that we need to talk to those people, and make sure that we address those issues. So that when we bring people up here, they're not gonna be shocked at some of the stuff that they might see, or at least get it cleaned up before they get here. So I'm all for it. Especially for Ken Graham, I'm all for it.
Is there any other comment from the public? All right.
They haven't even had a chance.
I know. Would anybody from the public like to comment?
Comment on my comment.
Careful.
You're gonna have to put a timer up here.
Kenny, give us a second, please. Set the timer for Kenny. All right, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, motion, I would make a motion to support the continued implementation of the Lake EDC Path to Prosperity Economic Strategy, and direct staff to consider the allocation of funding consistent with said plan as part of the development of the City of Lakeport fiscal year 2019 to the 20 budget.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry about that, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See if I can read the right one this time. Police chief, make a determination that public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of a type 20 off-sale beer and wine liquor sales license to Golden, California LLC for the Dollar General at 1450 South Main Street, Lakeport.
Mayor and council members, what you have before you tonight is that the Dollar General Corporation wishes to apply for a type 20 beer and wine license through the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. At this point, there are things that EDC look at. One is the location in a crime-reported district which has a 20% or greater number of reported crimes than other reported districts within a particular law enforcement jurisdiction. Or is there an undue concentration of current alcohol license also in that location, in that jurisdiction? And in this case, what we are facing is that there is an undue concentration of liquor licenses within the City of Lakeport under the provisions of that Business and Professions Code. We do not have a separate crime reporting districts in the City of Lakeport. We have one crime reporting district, which is the entire City of Lakeport. So at this point, because of that, this, before they can move forward with the issuance from EDC of a license, the governing body for the jurisdiction where that license is being sought must make a finding as to whether or not they believe public convenience and necessity would be served by allowing, making that finding so that they can move forward and be granted this type of a liquor license for that location. There were additional documents attached to the staff report that was submitted by the Dollar General Corporation that were sent out to you last week. And their representative is actually here tonight. He wishes to make comment when it's opened up to the public. But what I can tell you is that, based on our police department's calls for service and knowledge of the types of calls we get as related to liquor license establishments, I do not feel that the issuance of a beer and wine license for that Dollar General location will create any increased crime, just based on the fact that they're selling beer and wine. And what I typically look at as a police chief also is that are there, if we have a liquor sales establishment, are there issues with lawyering and crimes, other types of nuisance crimes happening around that establishment due to the sales of alcohol? I can tell you that within our city, these types of licenses, we don't see those types of problems with the people buying and coming out and drinking it in the parking lot and creating other crimes. So based on my experience, my knowledge of our calls and our crime stats in the city, I don't believe that this finding would create us any crime issues. But that's essentially a summary of the situation. It's really, it's up to the governing board, the city council, to decide if they feel that public convenience and necessity would be served by there being another license in our jurisdiction.
Yeah, if I could just provide a little context as well for your decision this evening. The council does have broad discretion to determine what is in the public's, public convenience or necessity. That term is not defined in the Business and Professions Code, and so it is up to this council to make that determination on a case-by-case basis. As a result of that, I would prefer to, after you hear from the applicant and the public, if you can provide staff with direction with respect to how you'd like this to come out so that we can bring back a resolution with findings that you can then amend as necessary, but based on the discussion this evening. In addition, I did want to mention what the undue concentration threshold is in order for this to come to council. All that it means is that the ratio of these types of licenses within Lakeport is greater than it is within the county as a whole. So that's all they look at, is does the number of the population versus the number of these off-sale licenses, is that ratio greater than the entire county? And in this case, it is. And that's why it is the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control fest this decision with the council. It does fest this decision if it were, for example, an on-sale restaurant or hotel. Those are decisions that are made by the department. But the statute was amended in their mid-'90s to give this decision for the off-sale types to the governing board or their destiny.
Thank you. Any comment from council, or do we want to hear?
Questions for staff, please, before you open it up?
We'll open it to the public? Is there any public comment?
I do want to note that Mr. John Sair that provided you with a letter did ask me to tell you that he had to leave early, and apologize that he did not leave early, but had intended to leave comment, but he did provide the letter for your review.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings, and I worked as a consultant through Dollar General stores. And this evening, I came up from Southern California, and I'm really happy I did. Clearlake is a beautiful place, and I got here a little early and had a chance to enjoy the view of the lake. You have a beautiful community. Dollar General, I know, is happy to be here as part of the community. I did have, I did bring a little bit of a... I did have, I did bring a, a little bit of a presentation, if I could just pass out a little information. Thank you. I'll let you just, sorry, I'll fill out my speaker information here. Dollar General stores, you know, this presentation is, is kind of meant for communities that may not be familiar with who Dollar General is. I, I hope that every one of you have had, had an opportunity to visit the store. They have come to California just in the last, say, five or six years. Prior to that, they were pretty much exclusively kind of east of the Mississippi River. There's kind of a, a pretty cool graphic in there. If we all lived in North Carolina, we would be intimately familiar with Dollar General stores. But in California, they, they started opening stores in about 2011 or 2012. And so our presentation was geared to communities that might not be familiar with who Dollar General is. They currently have close to 15,000 stores now nationwide. They did do some acquisitions recently, there are actually 41 states here. They are, needless to say, one of the largest retailers in the United States with 15,000 locations. In California, we currently have over 200 stores open. We have over 200 active ABC licenses. It's a standard inventory item for us to be able to sell a small portion of beer, beer and wine. Dollar General prides itself on the fact that it's able to offer its, its customers kind of the, one of the largest varieties of products. You can buy pasta and milk and pasta sauce and diapers and paper towels and so on and so forth, and toothpaste and so on. We carry all of the major name brands. We don't necessarily carry every variety of toothpaste, but you'll find Crest and you'll find Colgate and you'll find Ame. And you won't necessarily find every flavor and every size, but we inventory, you know, the leading, the leading category sizes of each of those brands there. Our beer and wine program is really just designed because our shoppers who are coming there already are looking to be able to make all of the purchases in one location. They're, they're to buy the milk, the eggs, you know, pasta, pasta sauce and so on and so forth. And oftentimes they would just simply like to buy, make the purchase of a bottle of wine to go with dinner later that evening. And so we don't dedicate a lot of square footage to it. If you'll notice, it's, it's usually anywhere from two to four cooler doors. It's usually one or two shelving units with wine. They're all the largest brands in the business. We don't sell any type of singles. Our product is really intended for the, the person that's there to shop for the entire family. So when we talk about, you know, public convenience and necessity there, or necessity, I would submit to you that it, it certainly is a great convenience to somebody who is there to, a busy working family, you know, two incomes and somebody just got off of work and needed to go down and buy some, you know, foods and some other things for dinner later that evening. I would submit to you that it is certainly very convenient that they be able to make all of those purchases in one location, including a bottle of wine that they may want to enjoy later that evening. The idea of, I had four sons, well, I still have four sons, they're all moved out of the house now. But my wife and I both worked and while they were very, very well-behaved boys, you know, picking them up after school and, and running around doing a few errands and things, they were, they were rambunctious. And so oftentimes it was, it was kind of, the idea of having to, you know, go to one grocery store and then simply not be able to make a purchase of a bottle of wine and then have to load the kids back up and, and drive, even if it's over to the next parking lot or over to the next store to just simply make that purchase, I would submit to you would be, you know, highly inconvenient. So, you know, our business model is, is that, that we try to be a one-stop shop. We try to provide very good value for all of our customers. This idea of PCN, as, as your city attorney pointed out, it kind of came around in the, in the nineties. And it, and it came about because of kind of the LA riots where ABC was just kind of issuing licenses to, you know, whoever, whenever. And after that event occurred, a lot of the cities kind of banded together and said, hey, ABC, we'd like some say-so in what goes on in our communities. So it was really, you know, an opportunity for, you know, local communities to be able to, you know, prevent the ABC from, you know, dictating. So they sort of came, came up with this formula. The idea of undue concentration is something that I encounter most of the time when I'm out doing my work. And it's, and it's because, it's quite honestly because the census tracts, which is the, you know, kind of formula that they came up with because it was a subdivision that already existed for the state, it's somewhat, it's, it's completely zoning blind. And what happens is, you know, through our planning, we, we have a tendency to concentrate our commercially zoned properties on certain corners or along major thoroughfares. So the situation in your community is very, very typical of a lot of situations where all of the grocery stores and drugstores and restaurants all seem to locate right in the same area and magically they all happen to be in the same census tract. So this is a situation that, that is, you know, very common to many, many communities. And I, I, I looked at, you know, I had an opportunity to visit the store and certainly we pride ourselves on, you know, having a very clean operation, maintaining our properties very well. Our customer base has, has certainly been very responsive and, and they have certainly inquired about the opportunity for us to, you know, provide them with beer and wine. So anyway, with that said, I obviously concur with Police Chief for Asmussen's, you know, analysis. And I'm available for any questions and we appreciate your time and consideration this evening. And obviously I'm available for any questions.
So you say that you're the one-stop shop so that you can go in there. So if I wanted to have pork chop or T-bone steaks and broccoli and Caesar salad, how successful would I be?
We carry some meats, we don't necessarily carry fresh butcher meats. It's usually deli meats for, you know, sandwiches and, you know, can of ham and things along those lines.
Do you have any fresh vegetables, fruits, bananas?
At this particular store, they may not. Some of the stores we do, it depends on local being able to source that from a reliable supplier.
So in other words, if they wanted to have salad and a bottle of wine and TV dinner, they would have to go somewhere to get the salad, but they could get the wine there if we proved this.
Oftentimes our stores that we have, we have, you know, prepackaged salads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? All right, bring it back to council.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, I was shocked to find out that they didn't already have a beer and wine license because every single gas station from here to Modesto practically has beer and wine. And I have to agree completely with the chief, we're not talking about little, you know, pints of bourbon, whiskey of all different types and sizes. I was pretty shocked to find out they didn't have one when I saw it on the agenda. Seems a totally normal situation for that to be there. And I can see where if someone went in there for their typical fare of junk food, potato chips and, and cookies and crackers and they want to get a six-pack of Bud Ice, then it's there. And I do see where that would be a convenience and I certainly don't see it to be some type of situation where there's a criminal element. I'm not personally a fan of Dollar General, as you can probably tell from my comments. But this to me is, in spite of that, I just think that this, this is kind of ridiculous to look at these statutes. And I think that he put it very well when he said, it's likely that when you have a development, you're going to put things in the same place. And it's not a coincidence that Bruno's has a liquor license and Dollar General are right there and then the grocery outlet's right there. Of course, they're all right there together in a commercial area because you're not gonna have one in the middle of like 11th and, you know, Brush or something like that. So it makes perfectly good sense. I don't see it as a big problem, even though I'm not a fan. I, I don't think that this is some kind of issue that, this is to me brought about by someone that would be like me that is a Dollar General hater, not because it's not gonna work or it's a problem. I just think it's, it's one of those things, it's like you let them in, now don't let them have their beer and wine. But I, I just don't, I, I just don't get it. Cause the people that are gonna go in there, they're gonna get their 12-pack, they're gonna get their chips and they're gonna get their cookies and they're gonna, they're gonna grab some candy bars and that's their dinner right there. So I don't see a problem with it, that's right. And I was shocked that they did have a beer and wine license, seriously.
I wondered if you were surprised. It does provide convenience when there's a lot of people on foot or taking the bus and maybe they don't want to walk all over the place.
All the way around to the other side.
All the way around.
Well, the other side of the parking lot will make it the Dollar store.
Right.
I think Chief put it very well, the way he put it out. Because it's just one of those things, it's not problematic for people to go in and grab a 12-pack and then walk out in the parking lot and break it open and then, you know, go to town on it. It would usually be the single serves that are going in there getting your, you know, your high-gravies and getting three at a time and hanging out in the parking lot. They don't sell single serves. So to me, this is, this is kind of a silly situation. And I, I respect other people's opinion, but I, I think they're Dollar General haters and that's all it is.
The business, the way I see it is, it, it's in a business that's in an appropriately zoned district for general retail. And just because you have more than one option to buy beer and wine doesn't mean everybody's gonna go to every single one that one day. So having additional options, right? That's what it's been tried in correspondence, you know, oh my gosh, there's this big concentration. But you're not gonna go to the Mexican restaurant and the pizza restaurant, order beer and wine and take it all home, stopping by Bruno's to, you know, get maybe some local reds or something. Doesn't happen, it's not how it happens. So it, it seems to me that, that signing this, this does serve a, a public convenience option. It seems appropriate for the zoning district. I'm fine with it.
I'm wondering, we got this email from, from
Attorney?
Gudmund Law, representing people from the community who are concerned about Dollar General getting their beer and wine license. And there was something in here, of course, without access to, they claimed that there wasn't access to the staff report.
It was online, staff report was with the agenda.
It was online, same place it always is.
But if we give direction today, we can bring it back and they can have another chance to talk about it.
This group of citizens might actually want to show up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the council gives direction as to how they would want us to bring the resolution back. We can have a resolution for next meeting to approve.
We only, we, we only received a complete application for it to our city requirements on February 12th. So we have 90 days and so an additional meeting will be, will be sufficient.
So what you're saying is we can postpone this to the next meeting and have other people take a look at those things.
Right. What we're asking is if we know the direction that you're, that you want to go, then of course you could change your mind for next meeting. We can have the resolution prepared for you for, for the next meeting.
Yeah, but my thoughts are in line with, with your guys' eyes. I don't particularly, sorry, I'm nothing against you personally, but I don't particularly care for the Dollar General. But to not allow them to sell beer and wine is just kind of petty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You won, but we're, we've, we've still got the ball, so you still can't play.
But we should let them, people come in and give us their, cause, yeah.
So our direction is to move forward with making a determination that the public convenience or necessity would be served.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
And make sure to post it.
Do you need a motion or do you?
That, that's sufficient, I think.
Okay.
And then we'll read back the, the documents next time. And they will, they'll be allowed to come in, you'll see it and post it and they'll come in and they're allowed to take on it.
And, yeah, and I, and I understand that the, the city clerk did respond and provide the link and instructions on how to access all of the agenda material from online. More than seventy-two.
That's cause she doesn't understand your job.
All right, so is there anything else with this?
Thanks for flying up here.
Yeah. Now you just have to come back in a few weeks.
March the 5th?
Five fifty.
I'll see you then.
We can just hook you up, tell them.
Yeah, just hang out, it's, it's a good place to be. Come up early and fish. I know places where you can get cooking.
City Council Communications, all right. Margaret, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
David?
No report, thank you.
Doug?
The only thing I'd like to say is we had our hazard mitigation meeting today, public meeting, and we had a full house here. I was very impressed, very happy. And so we're encouraging them to come back, we have one more. We value their input. So it was very successful and I was very happy.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd just like to report that the, the website development group had a final meeting today and we decided to have a go-live meeting of March 1st. So this city new website should be available to everybody on the world wide web on March 1st.
Nice. Ellen?
I don't know if I'm live here. I attended a conference, two conferences back-to-back and one of them was a conference from a vendor that sells software for electronic records management program. And it's been an ongoing research project and so I'm looking forward to getting that thing moving forward and perhaps getting the city in the digital age and going with less paper.
Good luck.
I know.
Sounds good.
Don't, don't burst my bubble yet.
No further report? Karen?
Nothing to report.
Anything down there?
Oh, no.
I would like to encourage people to buy one of the last remaining tickets for the Lakeport Senior Center crab feed. And it's always surf and turf, so it's crab and some kind of hunk of beef that I don't remember right now, but
It's my bread.
Thank you, thank you. So that will be this Saturday at the Senior Center. And we're auctioning off desserts. I'm making my chocolate cake with Earl Grey ganache. Auction off this Saturday.
Bring one here and auction off.
What'd you say? From Lake Transit, an update, Parent Transit's gonna resume their tours of Mount Canochtai. The county and LTA won that lawsuit that happened a couple of years back. Some of the landowners didn't want them using the property that way. So anyway, that's over, they won. So tours are gonna be made through October, they go all the way to the top. And I think last, last when they started initially, you can go online and make a reservation and it's, the whole thing looks out right away, really quickly. I think it's, what, Kenny, is it seventeen dollars, sixteen dollars, something, eighteen dollars?
Seventeen fifty and we told them that was a stupid price and should probably make it twenty bucks.
Well, we, meaning he.
Yeah, I told them it was a stupid price.
Well, twenty bucks would be easier. Anyway, there'll be some advertising on those buses too, on some, that do those local tours. We might want to consider an ad or Main Street Association on the bus. And then, I don't know if we've told you about Pay Your Pal program for non-emergency medical. Have we talked about that at all?
I don't think we have.
Well, so just an update, the Pay Your Pal program is where if you need to get to the doctor and you don't have any transportation and say you have an appointment at Santa Rosa, you can have a designated person that drives you and you can get reimbursed for that and pay them to take you. So it's been really, really successful and they have $35,000 budget and they're, they're, it's gone back and forth where they've used quite a bit of it and they thought they'd run out, where then they kind of got back on track. But I think you get a maximum of $2,500 for the year. And it's been, it's been really successful to help people get successful to help people get to, say, cancer treatments or heart treatments that we don't have here locally. So, if you know someone that needs that, that program is out there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Well, speaking of Lake Transit, or Paratransit and Lake Transit, we meet there with APC, and it looks like around about 4:53 and 20's moving along, and it's supposed to be done maybe later this year, as is the one on Hartman Drive down in Middletown, which I understand from Oak Simon, that sometimes the backup can be like a mile, so that's really good news. The bad news is, is that sections 2A, 2B, and 2C on the 29th Expressway, looks like the new price on that is going to be pushing 225 million, which is the reason why you do capital improvement projects as soon as you can, because the price goes crazy. I think we could have done it for 25 million about 10 years ago, and now it's, you know, five times that high, it's absolutely ridiculous. But anyway, Lake Transit is down five drivers, they're working hard to get people, the state government is enforcing new restrictions because of the real ID, and heaven help you, if you need to go get a real ID, that could be a real interesting situation. So they're having a lot of problems with
Well, yeah, I mean, it's taken a really long time to get new work, new employees in there, because it can take months just to get their real ID.
And then they're having the normal problems that we have with failed drug tests and stuff like that. So if you know anybody who's a bus driver, or you're retired and you like to get busy doing some bus driving, it's a really good gig, they have full benefits and Wanda Down that runs it, does a great job. But APC is really active, there's a lot of projects going on, including the one out by Bachelor Valley, where they're doing the culvert enlargement. And I tell you, someone who's older and doesn't see well at night, being in Lake County and the group that controls the highways out here, they do a magnificent job with the reflectors and all that stuff, as opposed to other areas, they're doing a really good job, so tribute to
And that one segment is moving forward.
Yes.
But are they breaking ground next year?
APC's now
I think it's right around the corner.
Yeah, that was like a 2020 thing, probably near the end, but anyway, it's, the, the whole project may not ever be done, the way it looks, but parts of it will be. But the roundabouts are going to be, and we discussed that, about how efficient they are when people understand them, and they know how they work. And we were actually trying to get a video of the Junk Food Junction, or hamburger hill, when they'd be fore and after, we thought that would be a very instructional video so people could learn, even maybe some of the law enforcement, like from the sheriff department, could learn how it works so that they don't, you know, get wrapped up in it, because I know chief and his guys can handle it anytime. Anyway, that's my report.
Thanks, Jenny. Brett, Dan?
Uh, I headed the hazard mitigation meeting, it was quite, quite good. Also, the Redwood Empire, Lake City's, is going to be over in Ukiah on March 1st, if anybody's going to that, so that's what I'm doing.
Yes, Sarah's asking for RSVPs on that, so
Yeah, they're going to have a tour
Please, let her know directly, or give, let me know, that's fine, I'll send her RSVP for the
Just be, that was the day we were going to do the, the goal planning, and I told you I was going to be out of town, so
Yeah, but
Well, you got us out of town.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
It's got Costco.
I've got no report. We're close to me. Me and George.